I may call the order in the meeting of Planning Commission for Monday, May 4th, 2015. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Brady.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Hancock.
Chairman Moore.
Here.
Commissioner O'Nines.
Here.
So we do not have approval of the minutes tonight. Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Okay. At this point, we have oral communications. The public's asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please enter your comments to items not already agendized for discussion. All right, I will close public hearing and we'll do matters at hand. Tonight, we are doing the housing element. We will adopt, attempt to adopt, I should say, Resolution Number 1506 recommending City Council amend the general plan by adopting the 2014-2022 Housing Element and adopt Resolution Number 1507 recommending City Council adoption of amendments to Title 17, Land Use of the Cattati Municipal Code. These actions are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, subject to Sequoia Guidelines, Section 1506, 1b3. Seegvitati is the applicant and we have the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you just called the item, it is an update of the final element of the general plan to be updated for us. If you recall, we just updated the last housing element in 2012, and that was to keep us compliant with state regulations. And this time, we are adopting the first of the elements that have the new eight-year cycle that's comprised basically of two four-year regional transportation planning cycles. So that was the reason for the change to the eight-year cycle. Since we did it so recently in 2012, we felt the amendments were pretty straightforward. And I'll let Ben give us a little bit more background on what the housing element is supposed to do so that we can have that context as we do our discussions tonight. But for the commission and the audience, the minor changes that we made are highlighted in yellow so that you can see those easily. And they consisted mainly of updating or incorporating the element, analyzing the 2010 census data, obviously incorporating the new regional housing needs allocation. And finally, the second part of your package tonight are the land use code amendments that were required to be adopted as part of our previous housing element. So we're here tonight to have the discussion about the policies and the goals and the numbers that are set forth in the element, as well as a review of those potential land use code updates. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ben for a very short presentation, and then we'll be able to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I will be concise and brief. So we'll go over the purpose of the housing element and what's in it, a quick summary of the revisions to the previous element, a quick list of what the land use code revisions entail, and a roadmap of the next steps towards adoption and certification. As you have in your staff report, the recommended actions tonight are to adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt the 2014 to 2022 Housing Element and a resolution recommending that the council adopt amendments to the city's land use code. So the overall purpose of the housing element is to identify housing needs, including those of special populations, identify any existing constraints to housing, identify resources, including land, available for housing, review the effectiveness of the current housing element, and then set forth the strategy for addressing the housing needs: new construction, rehabilitation, special needs housing for all income levels. So these bullet points basically represent the various chapters that go into the housing element. Nice little flow chart showing the process. So we started by updating all of the data from your 2012 housing element. So we had new development trends, new census and Department of Finance data, a review of the previous housing element, so what policies and programs were actually implemented, what remained to be implemented. And we took all that information, packaged it together, and we came up with the updated draft housing element. That is currently in the midst of a 30-day public review and comment period, and it was also sent to HCD, which is the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So they're doing their review right now concurrent with the public review. And we're now at the preliminary adoption hearing. So I think we're scheduled May 19th with the City Council. And you have a deadline of May 31st to have the document adopted. An adoption after May 31st would kick the city onto a four-year update cycle rather than an eight-year update cycle. And the state is quite serious with those deadlines, so there is a strong incentive to have it adopted and completed prior to the May 31st deadline. The regional housing needs allocation is one of the cornerstones of the housing element. So essentially, this is the number of units allocated to the city of Cattati via A-BAG from the state. So the state comes up with the statewide numbers for the various income groups, allocates those to the regional planning bodies, and then the regional planning bodies dole those out to the various member jurisdictions, the cities and the counties. So the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA, it considers zoning, the availability of sites, and the availability of resources and services. It tries to address the over and under concentration of low-income housing throughout the region so that certain communities aren't exempt from providing their fair share, or other communities aren't overly burdened. The housing units allocated are distributed among income groups, so extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. And I think, as the commission is aware, but it's very important to point out, the city is not required to build or construct these units, but it must take steps to show that you can facilitate development or that these units can be accommodated. Usually, the very first thing that the state looks at is your zoning map and vacant lands, and does your map and vacant land inventory demonstrate that these units could be built? But again, the city's not in the business of constructing housing, and so the actual construction of the units is not the city's burden to bear. But what you can't do is say, "You know, we don't have any zoning left for multifamily. We've got nothing but one acre estate lots and light industrial, so yeah, sure, we'll take our allocation, but good luck finding a spot where you could put them." The state actually checks, and we include a detailed inventory of your available sites. Fortunately for Cattati, with the general plan update and your current zoning map, you have more than adequate sites available. So your housing element is not triggering any kind of a rezone or change to your zoning or general plan map. We simply demonstrated to the state that you can accommodate your fair share of the RENA. We've done a variety of community input activities. Given that this is so closely on the heels of the general plan update, we factored in a lot of the community and public input that we got during the visioning workshops, the workshops with the Planning Commission. It's so close to the last update that we felt that a lot of that community input was still valid. We also did a housing element workshop last month, so on April 15th. I know Commissioner Brady was able to make it there. We had a representative from Habitat, from Humanity, another representative from a regional homeless coalition, I forget the exact name, but so we had some good participation. It ended up being a fantastic discussion. We were here for about two and a half hours, talked through some great issues. The input direction and feedback we got, we did incorporate into some of the policies that are in your draft housing element before you, so it wasn't just lip service for a public meeting. We did craft policies and programs based on that input. So some of the key input received over the course of the last couple of years with respect to housing issues is the need to address senior housing, transitional and supportive housing, very low-income housing, housing affordable for large families, homelessness, providing housing in proximity to transportation and key services, providing housing in the downtown specific plan area, including the Northern Gateway District, and the need to develop regional partnerships to assist special needs groups. So as Vicki mentioned, being as how we're on the heels of the 2012 housing element update, it's not a major overhaul. So the policy and program direction is substantially similar to what's in your last document. Most of the changes are minor, and they don't change the intent or purpose of your currently adopted housing element. We have updated census data, recent development trends, and the summary of the implementation of your past housing element. And being as how the same team prepared the housing element, as did the general plan, we made sure it was internally consistent. So nothing in this updated housing element conflicts with your recently adopted general plan. And also, as Vicki mentioned, the yellow highlighting in your draft document really just indicates things that have changed. So we tried to essentially do it and track changes so you could really hone in on what had changed from the last version. There's a series of land use code revisions that are also before you today. These were called for in the 2012 housing element, and they're necessary in order to receive state certification of the updated housing element. And these changes would bring the city's land use code into compliance with current state laws. So again, nothing radical in there, but there have been changes in state law over the last several years, and these action items were called for in your last housing element, and this is the step to bring your last one's implementation up to speed so that you can get state certification on the new cycle. So there are some changes to the inclusionary housing requirements, allowances for farmworker and employee housing, defining the term "family," streamlining the process for reasonable accommodation for persons with a disability, revised provisions for emergency shelters and transitional housing, increasing the bonuses available to applicants providing affordable and senior housing, condo conversion requirements, and size standards for second dwelling units. And just a quick shot of the timeline. So as I mentioned, we held a public workshop with the community and key stakeholders on April 15th. The public draft and the HCD review draft, the same document, but it was sent out for public review and sent to HCD on April 18th. And that public review and comment period will run through May 17th. We have a planning commission here tonight during the public review period. The City Council hearing on the housing element is scheduled for May 19th. And as I mentioned before, if the City Council adopts the housing element prior to May 31st, the city will move to an eight-year update cycle. So we've laid out an aggressive but achievable plan for getting this adopted and completed in time, but we need to hit our marks on all of these next steps, but we're committed to doing that. And the last thing I'll touch on is HCD review. So the State Department of Housing and Community Development, they have received the draft housing element, and they've provided us with initial feedback. So Vicki and I have had a conference call with HCD staff. Their review can be cumbersome and difficult, and our conversation went very, very well with them. So I've yet to see professionally HCD get a public draft and not have comments. And as HCD comments go, theirs were light and concise and to the point, and nothing was troublesome to staff or the consultant team as far as making revisions. Most of their comments were requested, requests for some additional background information or explanation of how various programs had been implemented. They had some questions on timelines, but what they really didn't do is come in and attempt to tinker with the policies and the programs. So their input is not setting the city on a new trajectory for policy. We're hoping to get their letter later this week, as far as their indication that the housing element, as revised per our conversations with them, will meet the requirements of state law. And that's sort of the holy grail letter you want to have in your hand before you take it forward for adoption. And again, without having that letter for you tonight, based on our conversation with them, there's not going to be any substantive policy or program changes requested by HCD. HCD will, so as I mentioned, they'll issue a letter indicating that the revised draft housing element meets the requirements of state law. And then the next step would be having the council actually adopt the housing element, and we would send it back to HCD for certification. And so there's two stages. The city adopts it, and then HCD certifies it. We don't expect any changes. They may request a minor change to the city's parking standards for studio and one-bedroom units. It was a discussion we had with them, but we think based on the location of future studio and one-bedroom units within the specific plan areas, which are the portions of the city where that development is most likely to occur, and the flexibility provided by the current code provisions as far as reduced parking standards, if you can demonstrate proximity to transit or bicycle and pedestrian facilities, we don't expect them to ask to come back to change any of the parking standards within the land use code. We just wanted to toss it out there as a discussion we've had with them, but we're recommending to the state that those code provisions not be changed, but we just didn't want any surprises later if they decide to push back on that issue. But I don't see it going that way. So I don't see needing any changes to the parking standards. And again, those would only apply to studio and one-bedroom units, and they'd be nominal changes. But if that happens, we'd come back. So that ends my formal presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions and engage in council or commission discussion.
Do I have any questions for staff? Steve?
Ms. Parker, when I was reviewing this on attachment to page six, it talked about penal code sections where people would be excluded from this, were they convicted of something under this penal code. I didn't have time to look up these penal codes. Could you give us a summary, please?
Yes, certainly. These code violations are the typical ones that you would be concerned about in a group living situation. So these are the firearms violations, drug possession violations, domestic violence, sex offenses that require registration. So it's in the family of, as I said, group quarters, living however temporarily. They want to be sure that they know who's there.
Ben?
And that section on the emergency shelters, that's a lot of new text. Is that from a state model ordinance, or?
It includes the, it's not a state model. It includes state code definitions, but the operational parameters of the program are a combination of Cattati-specific things and some best practices that we've seen.
Ben, do you have anything?
Yeah.
So looking at the numbers on very low income and low income, it seems like there's a, the thresholds are being pulled down. Page three, it's saying limitations on occupancy. It's got at least one-third is crossed out, and then it's put no fewer than 5%. So is that going from 33% to 5%?
No, one of your fellow commissioners pointed out to me that the math was not right there. So the goal was to-
Mathematician, by any chance?
Yes, which I'm obviously not. The overall requirement that we're proposing an overall reduction, a reduction in the overall requirement from 20% to 15, and that is, we can go into detail about why that is, but generally, it's to keep us consistent with other jurisdictions, most other jurisdictions in the area. And then the reduction, within the 15%, we were, we wanted to incentivize very low and low and take away the 33% that was there for moderate income. So to sort of weight it toward the very low and the low. So straight across the board, the math should be 5, 5, and 5 if we were doing it like we have, like the existing ordinance requires, a third, a third, and a third. That 15% would have just been 5%, 5%, and 5%. So I can explain my logic in that if we want to go into that discussion now, but I do want to acknowledge the math mistake.
Okay.
So it would be, Commissioner Ford suggested that if we expressed it as a percentage, then it's just a percentage of the total units proposed, and then the math would be correct.
Okay, good. If that's being looked at. And then I have one other, I don't know whether it's a question or a comment. I mean, in here, it's, if I can find the page, it was identifying that the vacancy rate for Cattati was, I think, 5.2%, but the rents have gone up, I mean, quite considerably in the last three or four years. So the rents, so that doesn't seem to jive very well. I mean, when I looked in Cattati a couple of days ago, there was only one rental available in sort of the lower two-bedroom area. So is that figure accurate, the 5.2% availability?
Can you give us a page citation?
I know, I had a minute.
Oh, okay. We'll look to.
One dash. Yeah, in the housing element.
So if I can expand upon that, so if you look in tandem with table 1-22, it delves in a little further on the type of vacancies. So actually, for rent units, the vacancies are nil in this table. So if you found one, that jives, you know, I'm sure-
Okay.
Numbers come and go. So a lot of the vacancies are for sale units, so they're for sale by owner, and they have yet to be sold. So these are houses that have been sitting on the market and aren't otherwise occupied, so they wouldn't, certainly wouldn't show up on a rental ad or a rental index. And then, let's see here.
So I'm, basically, I'm asking, I'm not comparing apples and oranges here, because the vacancy rate applies to housing, not rental units.
Correct. It's housing, it's the whole portfolio of housing, and it's not the vacancy rate as a rental landlord might look at it when doing his market research.
So when we have people that come in and are looking to supply to that rental market, like in the Santeria Way, I mean, what's the city's approach to that?
We're always trying to balance all of the goals, as we just did through the general plan process. It gets pretty intricate trying to balance all of the goals, which sometimes are competing with the Santeria Way project. I think everyone agrees that the county needs housing, and the county needs probably rental housing. Whether that project is supplying rental housing at a rate that's affordable, that hits the point of affordability is a big question. And the other question is whether it's the right location, given the specific plan that was a mixed-use plan. So there was also a requirement in our sustainable community strategy to provide jobs in that area, too. So with that project, we've always told the applicant, it may be that housing is a better solution out there, but the specific plan doesn't give us that flexibility. So we need to look at the specific plan holistically to see if it still fits before we can recommend a project that doesn't meet the basic goals of the plan.
Thank you.
And I just had a question on the second dwelling unit own policy that's been changed. I was the original person that was on the Planning Commission, and we helped draft that. So I just, this is, the state of California has redone the second unit? Because it's changed. I mean, yeah, that's what I need.
The state considers second units to be a, almost a de facto, supply of affordable housing. So given the size of the units and the way they're typically built, they can provide a good source of housing for oftentimes single parent households or individuals. So there are specific type of housing that the state likes to see, and they don't require them to be deed restricted. So a lot of, so they don't weigh into exactly what the second unit ordinance would be. They have, they have told us that we have to require them to be an administrative process, and they've told us that we can't require more than one parking space for them. But within, so just about everything else is up to us.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with the numbers on it. It's fine. I just was wondering why-
Wanted some context. The logic behind eliminating the 5,000-square-foot to 8,000-square-foot lot with that accompanying unit size was simply to get us to a size of unit that could have at least two bedrooms comfortably. That was the logic.
Okay. That makes sense.
Can I follow that up a little? So are you saying that second units count as regional housing needs allocation, very low units, without deed restrictions?
They don't necessarily count as very low. We submit to them every year when we do this, how many, well, actually, every year when we do a report back, we count second units in that mix. And so, yes, they do consider them even when they're not deed restricted, that cities should have a supply of that type of housing available.
The state likes to have it both ways with their second units. When you're showing your inventory of available sites, if you were to go around and say, "Well, we've got 500 single-family homes, none of which have second units, therefore, we could accommodate 500 second units," they would never buy that math as far as the city's demonstration of the ability to accommodate the RENA. But with that said, they consider it a valuable source of lower-income units, so they take steps to make sure that the city is encouraging and facilitating second units. So they nudge you to give them, nudge you to provide them, but don't give you credit for them when it comes time to calculate your RENA accommodation.
One more follow-up. Is there any, are there any consequences to the city about, at the end of a, you know, housing element cycle, about having met your regional housing need allocation or not?
I think very few jurisdictions actually meet, meet the RENA numbers for a variety of reasons. Sometimes the population just doesn't grow, and if it does grow, it doesn't necessarily go in the geography that was projected. But what they look for when they analyze our accomplishments is that we've got a land use code that allows for every, for all of the programs that we've identified to occur, that we've prioritized our grant spending as much as we can to facilitate it, that we've reached out to organizations. So mostly, it's a best efforts kind of review, along with ensuring that we've done the minimum as far as our regulatory concept to not prevent it from happening. And they quite often suggest various programs for us to explore.
All right. If we have no more questions, I'm going to open this up to the public.
Thank you. I've been watching these housing elements for almost 20 years now. It's always a little, a lot confusing to think about words like "strategy." The city has to have a strategy about a housing element to predict where housing is going to go, where it's going to go, how it should go. And basically, housing, which is a private entity, a private marketplace, was usually driven by a private marketplace. And there's a, there's a goal, and there's a job for local government to have zoning and so forth. But the housing element is always really something quite strange. And when you talk about promoting housing in certain areas and so forth, whether that's best use practices for certain land, it really kind of begs the question. This whole idea behind different cities having a certain amount of low-income housing each and a certain amount of medium housing so that it's not disproportionate is also, you know, very, very interesting concept when it really gets, when you get down to it. Like, each city should have the same amount of this and that. And we argued a few times with staff when they talked about, these are unfunded state mandates. And Bob Coleman talked about the frustration he had with unfunded state mandates, the fact that the state is putting mandates on these cities without any financial help whatsoever. And what is the penalty? What is the punishment for cities like ours who don't meet our housing element? Never really got a good answer to that. I think Marcia Sue Lustig said one time, "Well, the state, state will, might fine us." Well, can you continue a little bit more? What do you mean? I've never been able to find a city that's been fined for not meeting its housing element. Maybe our consultant can enlighten us, but I've asked that question. I've done a little Googling on this as well. There's a lot of smoke and mirrors about housing elements and so forth. But with staff recommending to you that, hey, you know, the city's not going to be doing any building here, don't worry. When you interfere in the private sector with this type of housing element, you are essentially in the building business. When you put those kind of constraints on private developers and private businesses, on what goes where and how many and so forth, you're basically in the business. You're the big brother over the system that's dictating who's going to come to town and build and who's not. And the whole idea that city governments try to ponder the fact of what is affordable housing, what's not affordable housing? Have we ever had affordable housing? I had professors in college do theses and wrote books on this subject. There is, it's a conundrum. There is no such thing as affordable housing anywhere. And the fact that government tries to articulate it and try to formulate it and try to meet the needs of the public, it's always, you know, almost borders on comedy. Now, from an eight-year plan, we have a four-year plan that we have to go through this every four years now, evidently. Or was it the other way around? Other way, okay, we go to eight from four to eight. Well, that might be a good thing. But the fact is that- But the fact is that state dictated housing requirements and begs all kinds of questions. You know, I had Councilman DeLoso come through my neighborhood during election time. We had a little chat about how nice he thought the neighborhood was. And I thought, you know, John, in 50 years, this probably won't, this neighborhood probably won't be here. We're in a preferred development area according to the One Bay Area Plan. You know, this is a prime, you know, 22 half-acre lots out here that could accommodate 10 times the amount of housing that's on these lots. We could accommodate 200 to 300 units out here next to the freeway, next to the transportation corridor. The best use for this property that I happen to own are not single-family 1,500-square-foot dwellings on half-acre lots with oak trees and swimming pools and so forth. But there's not an opportunity for us, right now, to go towards that type of housing down the road because of this type of social engineering where the government's involved in what goes where and so forth, strangling us and, and, and holding us back from using our property as best fit, as best fit. So there's all kinds of questions. I would like to leave you with maybe a solid question. What are the penalties here by not meeting the housing element? And are you or are you not meddling in the private sector here? Is government really kind of going too far with these types of requirements? And the next time you look at some of these empty lots that are not developed, you know, you might want to ask yourself, why? Not because there's not investors ready to roll up their sleeves and work with you, is that some of these regulations and predictions are just too far-fetched and don't follow the market. I mean, to throw a pass in a football game and not knowing who's downfield to catch it is really kind of an interesting concept. And the same thing goes through for housing. To plan that far out where housing's going to be on the government level, it's, it kind of borders on insanity. You know, it's not you guys keeping an even playing field and making sure regulations are in place for, for safe housing and for good transportation. This, this goes far, pretty far. Goes very far. And I know you guys have a tough job to do, but I want to raise these questions because I don't like it when staff says, "We have to do something," and the state is very strict. When it's, maybe it's a big paper tiger. You know, how does Mill Valley get away with this? How does San Bruno? Tiburon? They don't have these challenges that you, that you put yourself before tonight. But I never hear, I never hear council asking these questions. Bob Coleman did. Bob Coleman started to go down that path. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Am I close? Seeing no one else, am I going to close the public hearing? So I, there was a couple of questions on that, just the penalties if we don't have a certified housing element.
So, Cattati is one of 300-some cities that does a housing element. Everyone does them, so we're in good company if we're crazy. And the penalties for not adopting a housing element are all tied to a framework of various other programs and grants. So in our case, and Sustainable Community Strategy. So there are a couple of big-ticket penalties. The first is that you're ineligible for any state or federal transportation funds if you don't have a certified housing element. You also cannot streamline your development projects if you don't have a Sustainable Community Strategy, which requires you to have a certified housing element. In addition to that, we would be non-competitive for any of the local grants that we get, the CDVG grants that we use for disabled accommodation throughout the city, for our parks and roadways and sidewalks, et cetera. So the penalties range kind of all across levels of government because there's a, the housing element is part of a system that begins on a federal level to ensure that transportation funds are being targeted to communities that are pulling their weight in terms of the other obligations. And I don't know if Ben has anything to add to that?
About the only other thing I would add is if the state fines your egregious non-compliance with certain state laws that are administered through the housing element, the state can and has step in to essentially seize local control over that particular planning issue. So for example, if the city was unwilling or unable to designate a zoning district that would allow an emergency shelter by right, the state could come in and designate one on behalf of the city and essentially take away local land use control, which is really one of the core tenants of, of local planning. And having a non-adopted, non-certified housing element also opens the city up to a wide range of private lawsuits that could be brought against the city for not having an adopted certified housing element.
Okay. So, is there any discussion? Start with Steve.
I had a question for Ms. Parker. Based on cases of building permits being denied, prohibited or restricted, do you possess any...
There have been no permits denied or any development applications that, no, that the applicant has not submitted because of the affordable housing requirements. Our, everybody has affordable housing requirements. Every city that has a certified housing element has an inclusionary housing program, has a housing element that targets a mix of, a housing for a mix of income groups. So developers are very well aware that it's not a question of whether they have to do it, it's a question of how do I do it and when do I do it? When are the triggers? What are the incomes that I'm required to build to? And this element actually gives them more tools. As we mentioned earlier, we dropped the percentage required of inclusionary units simply to be not more onerous, so that we would not drive away projects that could otherwise be built and provide that housing. So, thank you.
All right. Ben?
Well, I want to see if we can fix up the math in the inclusionary zoning. And in addition, so there's, what it currently means to say, I think, is no more than 5% of the total requested units shall be restricted to occupancy by very low-income households. And also, no more than 2% of the total units shall be restricted to occupancy by moderate-income households. So basically, all of that 5% in reduction of the inclusionary housing requirement is coming out of the moderate-income piece, essentially. That's what's, so that we're not changing the very-low-low pieces very much. Reducing very-low a little bit, so a little more in low. But the, so I want to see if we can fix that up. And those two paragraphs, A and B, 2A and B on the top of page three, are, I think, they're very unclear to me. And I know they're not new language, but it's bizarre language. Every very-low-income unit is equivalent to two units affordable to moderate-income households. And I would love to take this opportunity to make that make more sense, if we could come up with any better wording. And it feels like what we're talking about is some kind of point system. You know, you get, you have to accumulate 15 points where every unit restricted to moderate-income households is worth one point. I mean, every 1% of requested units, restricted to moderate-income households earns one point, and every 1% of total requested units restricted to low income earns one and a half points, and very-low earns two points. Am I getting what this is intended to say? And so it's not really a 15% requirement. It's like off the bat, when we say the 5%, no fewer than 5% of the total required inclusionary unit shall be restricted to occupancy by very-low income, that's really 2.5%, right?
Well, the, the A and B provisions, those are completely voluntary. So they only kick...
Council may authorize.
Yeah. So, so that's obviously meant to incentivize the lower end of the income categories as well. So if someone, I'm trying to think of a good example. If someone came in with not townhomes, but say, an apartment project worth stacked flats, and they knew that they could easily accommodate two very-low units in that fashion, they might want to make that swap where they wouldn't have to construct a different type of building to get it, to get the low or the moderate. So they would be willing to provide more of the very-low. So A and B is completely voluntary. The mandatory part is in the top paragraph, the paragraph two.
Still not clear how it's applied. So if I come in with a 100-unit project, do I have to build five very-low or two and a half?
If you came in with a 100-unit project, you would build five very, in this context, five very-low, two moderate, and then eight low.
So A, I couldn't apply to council to get 2A to apply and count each very-low unit as...
So, yeah, I'm sorry. It was a two-step. So you'd build, you'd build five, eight, and two according to, that would be the minimum requirement. And if you were an applicant, and you could propose that instead of building five, eight, and two, you would build...
Six and eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you'd have to go to council and, or that would be, that would be Planning Department?
The, it would be Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay.
I think the...
It is a little confusing in the language. I mean, now that you explained it, it makes sense. But definitely reading those two, it is a little confusing.
Well, maybe the, the way to advance the discussion is to decide first whether the commission thinks that weighting the income categories in both the first limitation and in the voluntary is really appropriate. And I can explain the logic a little bit to give you the context for it. What's been happening in our latest conversations with development applicants, and those are both market rate and affordable, so we've had these discussions with affordable housing producers as well, is that right now, the income, the sales price that derives from the income restriction on a moderate-income household, the sales price on that unit is around $350,000. And so people would rather, if they can at all, spend another $10,000 or $15,000 and buy a non-restricted unit. So they're really not able to market those units that are targeted toward the moderate-income group. They can't find buyers for them. They end up with a lot of regulatory stuff to do without a buyer. So the logic here was that, well, if it's not working from a market perspective, then let's acknowledge that, require a few of those, and use that money that would have otherwise been spent on that unit to subsidize the very-low and the low. So that was why it was structured that way, however awkwardly.
Well, I just a comment. That makes more sense, too, because over the years, we've had to see this inclusionary housing. And we've lost a lot of that over the years with deed restrictions not being honored. And then, you know, a housing, house gets sold, and then, you know, 2020 hindsight, somebody says, "Oh, that was a deed-restricted house." And then it's gone. It's gone. Once it's sold, it's gone. And so I, you know, I'm more inclined to do, put it in inclusionary housing and let, you know, either Burbank or somebody else come in and, you know, yeah. And, you know, the city comes and helps with that, those funds. Just because, like I said, I've seen a lot of that over the years where we've built, one right off the bat was on East Cattati Avenue. Is it Dicquesto or something? Anyways, they, they sold that right off the bat for $400,000 and nobody caught, our planning department did not catch it. So this has kind of left a sour taste in a lot of people's mouth, and a lot of places have not been, and it's hard to manage those. So...
If I could make a language suggestion, based on what I'm hearing, I'm getting the sense that the commission is comfortable with the intent of this language and that the, we would likely benefit from a transition sentence between the upper paragraph and bullet points, A and B. And so, something along the line. So it currently reads, "To encourage additional development of low and very-low income housing, the council may authorize the use of the following equivalents, but provide an explanation that in order to assist developers and applicants, the following options may alleviate or reduce the requirement for moderate-income housing units at the following scale." I think we could articulate it better than that. But just sort of clarify the fact that you have to meet your, your inclusionary requirements and that you may construct fewer moderate-income units if you construct more very-low or low using the following equivalency scale for the point system at the discretion of the council on a case-by-case basis. So I don't think I'm articulating the exact sentence, but providing that transition between, you know, here's the requirement, here's some A and B options to encourage low and very-low income units, but provide a little more of a transition explanation between those, those two sections of this.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
We trust you.
Although I would like, not to belabor it, but I am the one that applies these. So I, if we, so I would just like to hear from the commission whether you think we should just go back to the third, the third, and the third, and use these, use these two equivalencies to regulate? Or whether you're comfortable having the dual weighting, one optional, one mandatory?
I would probably lean towards going back to the third, third, third. I don't feel real strongly about that. A deed restriction should not be up to the city to enforce. That's a title company issue. A title company better not be transferring deeds and ignoring deed restrictions. We used to not use deed restrictions as the mechanism. We used to use other mechanisms and we, we lost those. And, but I'm sure deed restrictions get lost, too, but then you sue the title company. But the issue with not being able to sell the moderate-income restricted units just means they're still charging too much. They're not giving enough of a discount for accepting the deed restriction. I mean, and, you know, when, when we built the Cohousing Place, all 30 units were moderate-income affordable, but we had to restrict five of them. And so, you know, we had to make enough of a discount for people to accept the deed restriction. And I think it's worth something to the city to have some permanently protected moderate-income housing. Because housing that's built as moderate-income affordable tends in a, in a, at least in historical housing trends, doesn't stay moderate-income affordable. And so I think it's still worth something to insist that some housing gets permanently protected as moderate-income affordable.
Well, we, we don't lose that option. We just decrease it, right?
Decrease it to 2% of restricted...
Decrease it to 2% instead of 5.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think there's, there's, there's pros and cons on both sides. But I think when housing is going up, so, I mean, in our neighborhood right now, the house next door to us is sold for $455. It's an L-section house. I mean, it's like ridiculous now. And so you're looking at moderate now for $350. And so as that starts to climb up, moderate is, at $350 will be moderate, you know? So I, I think it's all reflects with the market type thing. You know what I mean? It's, so, I don't know.
So it makes the original question, would you like the original wording, or would you care for the change?
I guess my question is, is there, is there better deed restriction enforcement now than there was in the past?
Well, Commissioner Ford... Well, Commissioner Ford's correct. I don't know exactly how they were done in the past, but it is the title company's responsibility to make sure that they're monitoring those deed restrictions when the title passes. The challenge is, and I think what you were thinking about, is who is qualifying those households? Who's looking at their income? Who's, who's monitoring it to make sure that's who's living in the unit? That's the burden of the regulatory agency and what we're not staffed to do. So that's the part that can get a little out of control, is, it could be that the owner of record qualified at the time, but in the ensuing years, you know, we're not sure who's living in it. So it's definitely a conundrum. It's not one that's necessarily solved through the inclusionary. And the other point I did want to clarify is that our ordinance restricts the units for 30 years, not in perpetuity. That's one of the reasons that we like the Housing Land Trust model, because they do restrict them in perpetuity, and they also manage them. So it's a, it's a great model for small cities, but I just want to clarify that, that it's for 30 years. So...
Well, let me hear from Jamie and Neil. What do you, how do you, what's your, you want 5, 5, and 5, or do you want the new revised 2.5%?
582.
582, yeah.
But I, I don't know, I'm kind of leaning towards the newer model, just because I'm feeling like that's probably more the need, but, I mean, that's just, I don't know, it's just my instinct, but I don't, I mean, it's for the next eight years, so who knows what will happen.
Okay. Neil, do you have any strong feelings?
I don't have any strong, but observation is that I think it's the low income that really, the very low income, it's down at the bottom end where is just the really, the heartrending cases, and it's having more people, more facilities down at that end, I think. I mean, it's, it's hard all over, so I don't have a very good view of, of the whole market and the way it works, but I would be leaning, I would think it's a good idea to try and favor that end, but I don't have a strong opinion, I don't have any strong data.
Ben, you were like the older version. What about you, Steve?
Yeah, I think it's, like I said, I can go either way. It's kind of one of those, you can still have the moderate, and you can apply for the low, so...
If you would like to look at comparable sales and sales prices and rents, you can go to page 1-12, table 127, 1-27. We typically use a four-person household when we're setting sales prices for units, so the 1, 2, 3, fourth column over, the first one of that group is the sales price, and you can look and see, very low would be $149,000, low is $233,000, the moderate is the $357,000 that I mentioned earlier, and above moderate would be just above that $357,000. And then the next column is the equivalent in rent, monthly rent. Table 1-27.
Okay, right.
Using the third, the third, and the third with, in concert with the paragraph A and B equivalency, definitely gives the most flexibility to, for the eight-year cycle. It's less formulaic.
Well, then I would probably be more inclined to do that. Whatever gives us a little more flexibility with the eight-year cycle would be, and then if somebody came in and, I guess, like you said, moderate housing, it's, in eight years, this is going to, all these numbers are going to change, for the good or for the bad.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
I was going to say, one more reason to go that way, as I read through the other cities' requirements that you put in the packet, we'd be, you know, even with the, if we stuck with 582, we'd, we'd still be significantly tougher than most of the other jurisdictions, as I read them. You know, Windsor, 5% affordable to very low income would get you your entire requirement. No, you wouldn't have to do any low or moderate, so, and the other, many of the others don't have any allocation between very low, low, and, and I think that's important, to have the very low piece in there, and encourage trading down into there, but I'm a little leery about insisting on 10% low, or 13% low and very low.
I guess that's something that I'm a bit more open to, and definitely see a huge need for it in our county, so I think we'll start seeing a change for that, so I'm, I mean, I don't have the same, I guess, feelings for being like a driving force in that, but I'm, I'm okay going a third, I just, you know. But probably for what I do, too, I'm very present to it and see the need for it much more often, I think, than most people are exposed to, so I think I have a, I don't know. I face it too much on a daily basis to make like a general perspective. And then the people who were in the workshop were the same way, so I think a lot, we've, the people we heard the feedback from, we all have the same, we all do the same thing for a living, so I think we all felt very strongly about the providing for very low income, so that, but that was like the only voices that we're here, are very involved in that, in that world.
And I think, like I said, I think it gives the flexibility to have that for us.
I think it does. I just think it shows more that that's, there's definitely a huge need for it.
There is. I talk to people in the business all the time, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, what Ben was pointing out is like the, how we're overpaying now, but I don't know if you saw this morning on the news, like on the, I think it was the Today Show or someone who wrote, I saw an article on it, but I think they played it on the Today Show this morning. It's like, it's a national conversation now. You started it on April 15th here with us, or maybe long before, but how, I mean, everyone, like half of their income now, I can't remember what the exact percentage was, like half of their income is going to their mortgage payment or their rental payment, and they're looking at that increasing, whereas, you know, of course, all the financial experts are saying it should just be a third or 30% of your income should be going to your rent or your mortgage payment. But I know you were showing that, and I looked at the percentage of who's doing that Cotati, and I think you have it printed here, and I was like, watch, that can't be, that can't be right. But it's, they're looking at it at a national level now, and how common that is, so...
Are you comfortable with thirds during the...
Yeah.
I'll go with it.
Well, she's not comfortable, but she's going with it.
I'm not really comfortable, but I'm going to go with it first and move forward, I'm not...
All right. Is there any other discussion on this?
Yes, should we address this memorandum?
I saw this letter.
It appears that Ms. Parker is quite favorable to it.
I was just looking at, where is policy H2-4?
It's right in the front. It's on page eight. And, or I'm sorry, nine, page nine. Oh, eight.
Eight.
See, it's Ben's fault. He can't do math.
Do you want to, are you comfortable with redoing that language?
The, Ms. Lyman's goal, really, as you probably guessed with reading the results, she, she was concerned that the language was too vague, that it would enable the whole schema that we've put together with the general plan to sort of be overridden on, by individual projects. And so she was just looking for something that acknowledged the work of the other elements of the general plan. So I, I think it was, I think it was a good addition, actually.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that policy? Does the, the regional housing needs allocation, it gets redone every four years, every year?
It will get the new allocation now on this eight-year cycle. The Department of Finance is the one that, the numbers originate with the Department of Finance, and they're probably constantly looking at projections, you know?
But, but we only have to respond to it when we do the new housing element.
Yes.
So because we're following four years of super-low growth, we got a very low housing allocations need, and that's kind of all we have to address for the next eight years, even if population growth takes off in those eight years.
That's correct.
It's kind of a unusual change.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, everyone's numbers and the entire ABAG region, everyone's numbers went down.
Was that because of redevelopment funds also, because we used to be able to sponsor some of...
No, it, it simply has to do with population growth and where the population is supposed to locate, where they project it to locate.
Okay.
But that's, that's based on a historical algorithm, and it has a fair amount of lag in it, is what we're seeing, because we're seeing overheating, but this is not taking into account to it, because the lag is...
Right. It was based on the 2010 census, so definitely it, definitely it's going to, this may be one of those years where we get close to, you know, maybe not us, but other jurisdictions get close to building their allocations, we'll see, but yeah, it's definitely based on a very slow economy. And the reverse is true in the boom years, that it doesn't respond as quickly to growth either.
Okay, any more discussion?
No, I mean, I think it's a good idea to have, to have a policy like we have here. I mean, we, we need to have something, if we, if we didn't have policies, you know, then you could have like in Santerana Way, people could just come in and build what they wanted to, and they, they could say as in dozen other parts of, say, Houston and Texas, they could just say, we want some high rises here and no parking, because there's train stations, and so I think there's a benefit overall to having an integrated framework.
Zoning is a good thing.
Has, has value. Depends which side of the question you are.
Yeah, I'm all about like zoning. We just had this conversation at my house about the housing element, so...
I've never wanted to live in any of the places that don't have housing, don't have zoning.
Wait, are there two resolutions?
There are two resolutions. I was just going to say that there are two resolutions. There is resolution 1506 and resolution 1507, and would you like those taken separately or together?
Yes, please, separately.
So I just need a motion on the first one, 1506.
Move to approve resolution number 1506.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have a roll call?
So that incorporates this addition to H...
It does. What are the changes we discussed?
Ready for the vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
And then I would like a motion on resolution 1507?
Where is 1507?
It's a couple pages past 1506.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden in the...
It says attachment to resolution 1507, and then it starts on the next page.
It's, it's on, right here.
It's on the back, that's why.
Reverting back to the original...
It's the very long one, Neil, with all the strikeout underline.
Yeah, and so we'll put the changes or reverting back to the original.
Put that in the motion.
And new language being incorporated. Whoever does that motion.
Want to try?
Okay, yeah, fine.
I move that we adopt Planning Commission resolution number 1507 with changes to the inclusionary housing requirement language, clarifying the percentages and adding a transition sentence between the, where'd it go? Between paragraph two and sub-paragraph A.
I support that. Second that.
All right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, was that seconded by Commissioner Hancock?
It was.
Thank you. Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We have reports by staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have very little to report tonight. It's been slow on the entitlement side and very busy on the long-range planning side, but generally, we are, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with the applicants for Santerana Way. They've been telling us that they want to make changes to the project, and we haven't seen too many yet, but they're coming in tomorrow. They have not gone to council because they've been wanting to do some redesign on their project, so we'll see tomorrow whether they're actually going to go forward with denial or a full redesign. The project on East Cotati, the Village Walk project, the one at East Cotati in Lancaster, they actually did come in and pull their, what we're calling their master permits, and that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to build, but what they did was they pulled them so that they could have bidding done, so they've actually gone out for bids on the project, so we're hoping that they go forward with that one. And the Valparaiso project also continues to be in process as a map amendment to the previously approved project. We had a couple of other, the property that is right on the city boundary, off Old Redwood Highway, just past Clothier on the west side of the road, that project, we're expecting to come in, an application in the next maybe 30, 45 days. And we've had a lot of good interest in projects on the downtown-specific plan, actually, some things that might actually happen there, so, so that's all good news. We haven't been doing much in the business park. It's been really quiet out there, as you know. They haven't been coming in for use permits or tenant improvements, so we'll see, we'll see what, what's going on out there. But there is a brand-new business out there that bought the La Cash Wine Cabinet Shop, and this business is from South San Francisco, and they relocated to Cotati, and they make custom moldings and cabinetry for businesses and wineries, upscale homes and stuff, so that was good, that that business was, that, that building and the property was purchased by this user, so that was a good change that happened recently. And we're working steadily on the housing element, and we have a new planner starting on Wednesday. Yay. JP, so soon as, if you're in the room after, or in the building after Wednesday, stop by and we'll introduce him, otherwise we'll bring him to our next Planning Commission meeting. I think you'll enjoy him.
Okay. Any reports by commission?
Yes. I hate to take up any more time. There's an Eagle Scout project on this Saturday, May 9th, at La Plaza Park. They're going to repair and repaint, restain the bandstand, and I'd like to invite everyone to participate in that. I believe it starts at 8:30. Also, Ms. Parker, I noticed that property you were talking about on East Cotati is really looking dilapidated, overgrown with weeds. Is there something we can do about that?
We can. Contact them for weed abatement.
All right. If that's, oh, I have one other thing. I'm actually going to a seminar at Sonoma State on the 21st. I don't know if, I can send out if anybody else is interested. It's a workshop on water and kind of sustainability, so, it's an, it's an all-day workshop on Thursday, the 21st. It's Sonoma State. Okay.
I guess I should say, I don't know whether, I mentioned previously, but I actually went to a conference on water and salmonids, and a lot of the crux of the discussion right now on water with the drought, and the study of water and the way it moves through California, is actually plan for the big storms, because there's this big swing that happens in the atmospheric events, and so just because we, we have a drought situation, you actually got to be looking at what happens when everything dries up, and then you get a big storm that comes in. So it's, it's, and I guess I hear that message in other areas as well, so, I mean, there is a, an attempt to try and make it visible.
If, we are good. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.